Jesus is the sweetest name I know. And he's just the same as his lovely name. And that's the reason why I love him so. Oh, Jesus is the sweetest name I know.
Amen. Grab your Bibles. Second Kings this morning. In the name of Jesus, every knee shall bow. And every tongue shall confess. That he is Lord, the Lord of God, the Father. And right now, there is no glory for this little two-hick you have here, can't it? Wow, man. Oh wow, there you go, man. Prince of the power of the air showed up. Sweet. Second Kings eighteen, man. Something about the name of Jesus Christ, the blood of Christ, all that stuff, man. It attracts some, uh, some fowls, if you will. Second Kings eighteen. And I, I know crazy stuff's gonna happen this week, man. Gets you ready for the, for the meeting. I know if it hasn't happened already, and I know stuff will happen afterwards. You know, it's just the way it goes. The devil may not be able to read your thoughts, but he's sure been watching you long enough to know what makes you and I tick. And he is, I believe firmly aware of the sin that doth easily beset you and I. And what might trip my trigger doesn't trip yours. What might trip you, it doesn't bother me at all, but he's, he's been watching mankind for a long time. He's very subtle, and he transforms into angel of light, and he's, man, he'll show, he'll show up just at the right time. But thank God we have a Savior who beat that clown, and one day he's gonna put his heel around top of his son's head and trash him. I cannot wait for that day, boy. I look forward to the rapture, but the second coming is gonna be outstanding. Get to sit back and watch the blood flow as high as a bridal, uh, the bridal horseman. Watch the Jee- doc, watch the Lord Jesus Christ get everything due to his holy name. I can't wait, man. Can't wait for that day. Second Kings, chapter eighteen, verse one says, "Now it came to pass in the third year of Hosea, son of Elah, king of Israel, that Hezekiah, the son of Ahaz, king of Judah, began to reign. Twenty-five years old was he when he began to reign." Do you know any twenty-five-year-olds nowadays that could do anything? Vel- Velcro, huh? Well, if you're past twenty-five, you should say, "Yeah, I'm, I'm older now, matured now." No, they, no, man. You give them Velcro sneakers, they still don't know how to tie them. Twenty-five years old was he when he began to reign. He reigned twenty-nine years in Jerusalem. His mother's name also was Abby, the daughter of Zechariah. And he did that which was right in the sight of the Lord according to all that David, his father, all that David, his father did. Verse four, "He removed the higher places and broke the images, cut down the groves and breaking pieces the brazen serpent that Moses had made." Isn't that strange how they keep things around? They gave him past victory. How about you go on down the road and get some, uh, fresh bread from heaven, man? Interesting how they keep that around as an idol. I, I know we don't do that as independent, fundamental Baptists, but I'm just saying they did that, so it'd probably just be good to read and blow past it. "For unto those days the children of Israel did burn incense to it, and he called it Nahushtan." Great name, man. Don't name your kid that. Verse five, "He trusted in the Lord God of Israel so that after him was..." Now, this is one of the most shocking things about any of these kings. "So that after him was none like him among all the kings of Judah, nor any that were before him." He's quite the king. Father, thank you this morning for saving our souls from hell, a hell that I know I rightly deserve. Father, even after being saved, I've done many things to disappoint you and to grieve the Holy Ghost of God, and I thank you for your mercy and your kindness to allow me space to repent of those things and get them right. But Father, there's still more things that have to be taken care of, and I, I pray through the preaching of the word of God this morning, you deal with me first and the folks in this assembly. Father, through the power of the Spirit of God, you help me to preach exactly what needs to be preached and not to say a word about those things that don't need anything saying about. Father, you would control the services as you see fit for your honor, your glory, and your praise. Father, I don't know the, the situations going on in these folks' lives with any detail or any intricacy, but you do. And I pray that today, Father, you would search the hearts through this book as only you can. Father, you'd reveal things that need to be taken care of, and Father, you'd come along and maybe give some comfort where comfort's needed as only you can. That Father, all of the thanksgiving may be redound back to you. Thank you again for this King James Bible, Father. It is a blessing to have the mind of Christ in fifth and sixth grade English right in front of us. Father, please help it to transmit from our heads to our hearts, down to our feet, that we might do those things that you've commanded us to do, that we are bring displeasure to you, Father, in the remaining years, times we have on this earth. In Christ's name, I pray. Amen. I would say this, when you read through the books of First Samuel, going on through Second Chronicles, you don't find too many better kings than Hezekiah. You just read what the Lord said. When the Lord says something about you that's positive, you can take it to the bank, because he knows your heart, he knows your intent. He knows your integrity, he knows the way you act, what you really think about. He knows your character when nobody else is around to really, you can put on a show for. So if God says there was nobody like before him or after him, that's pretty high praise for a man, and that man is Hezekiah right here. And I, I like reading through the kings, most of your northern kings, when the kingdom splits up, you see that back in the fir- book of First Kings, you see that Rehoboam, uh, goes, uh, to the south, it's Benjamin and Judah go south, and then the ten northern tribes, that becomes Israel. So you see factions, two factions. You see the kings of Israel, the northern kings, and you see the two southern kings with Rehoboam and Jeroboam. Most of the kings in northern Israel are horrific. Most of the kings in the southern part, the two tribes, are good. Even though they may have one or two things that they hold on to, the bulk of the Judaic kings are positive. Now, that being said, none of them have, like I said, they have no, they're not all flawless. And you can look at Hezekiah and say, "Man, he messed up and all that stuff, and he asked for more years, and the sundial went back." You that are older than fifty, sixty years old, don't you wanna go out to your backyard in your garden and ask for the sundial to go backwards right now? Or maybe you don't, maybe you're happy to get to the end of your life and say, "It's over, I'm closer to the rapture now than ever have been." That, well, you don't, 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 don't give away your birthday, Kathleen, but that's alright, man. But I mean, you, sometimes, uh, yeah, I mean, if the Lord tarries, we're all gonna see death. I know, I know we've been preaching, and we should be preaching about the rapture, that's our blessed hope, and in Titus, chapter two, verse thirteen, and that's two thousand years ago. Well, where's the Lord been? Well, doing what he's always been doing, saving souls and training up saints and doing all of those things. But I, I'd like that time to go by quicker. You know, if he said, "Come up hither right now," I'd be happy with it. As much as you guys love to hear me preach, it's probably a little bit better for a preacher up in the third heaven, his name's the Lord Jesus Christ. I'd rather hear him preach than anybody else down on this earth. Well, that being said, Hezekiah makes a mistake, and he says, "You know what? I want some more years, man." And, you know, you, listen, don't sit there and say, "Oh, oh, no, I wouldn't, I would just wanna die for the Lord." No, man, "Skin for skin, all that a man hath, he'll give for his life." The devil knew that when he was speaking to the Lord over in the book of Job. Uh, when you get really sick, you don't wanna talk to anybody, you don't wanna be around anybody, you don't wanna do anything. So I don't blame Hezekiah for saying, "You know what? Good Lord, would you give me some more time? And while you're at it, go get me some of them fig Newtons over there, so I can put it on this boil over here and get better." That's what he did. He put a big lump of figs together and put it on the sword, and it got better. But you see what happens when you got that extra time, don't you? Uh, the door is open for Babylon to come in for a future captivity and to ransack all of the Lord's gold and all of the the worship, uh, uh, instruments for the Lord's house and all those things, and, and, and probably what I think is one of, if not the worst thing, is that during those extra years, he gave birth to a son named Manasseh. Manasseh is the longest-reined king in your King James Bible. Fifty-five years. Five in your Bible's the number of death, folks. So I don't care what Sammy Hagar said, fifty-five is not good. Eighty-five's better on eighty-four, but I'm just saying, man. But, so he gives, you say, "Well, what did that time do and all that stuff?" Well, it gave him, it gave him Babylonian captivity. They came and said, "Oh, you got some really nice stuff. Uh, we'll see you in a few years, we'll come be, we'll be coming back for that stuff." And then he gives birth to Manasseh, the wickedest king Israel ever had. But in all and all, when you look at the man's life, he did that which was right, he slept with his fathers, all those wonderful things, and there's some things in his life, in particular, one thing I'd like to look at this morning for a little bit as we get ready for our, you know, I mean, we had Brother Kim here last year, and that was really cool, but he kinda, you know, he blew in and blew out, you know? Took a big love offering, went, you know, built a church in Korea, and now he's world famous now. But, I mean, we, we had a very specific time with him, but we've actually been planning about this. I actually prayed about this thing for some time. I wanted to get to know Brother Knowles. I really did. He's a good guy, man. And he, he speaks broken English, he's from Alabama, he's eating, and all that stuff. But he's just a really good dude. Deb, sorry, don't look at me right now, I know you're from North Carolina, but, but he's like further, I mean, you're cultured, that's, I mean, North Carolina's, that's, that's like culture, but you start, he'll say, you know, "I'm from LA," and it'll be lower Alabama. But I, I wanted to get, he's just got a good spirit about him, you know what I'm saying? I know the Holy Spirit, and he's just got a good spirit about him. The way he preaches, the way he talks to his folks. It's real, man, it's not phony. I like that. So I'd been praying about this, and we went down to Dr. Peacock, the Jubilee meeting. And, I mean, it's packed at the altar, we're praying for a few things, and they had everybody go up on a Wednesday night. You guys remember? Kenny, I think you were sleeping during that prayer time. But the, uh, we went off, and it was mobbed up there. Then all of a sudden I hear, "Hey, hey, you got, you got room there, brother?" I'm like, that's only one person that I like that, man. It's either the Dukes of Hazzard, Duck Dynasty, or Dennis Knowles. And it wa- I've been praying for an opportunity to get to know him better since I met him years ago, and he, he pulls up right next to me, man. And we start praying together at the altar, it's pretty cool. Then we got to talking afterwards and all that stuff, and I said, "Hey, uh, if you're not doing anything, like to come to church?" He goes, "Oh, sure, brother, I like you northern folks." And he's like, "I like you northern folks, man." You know what? It's actually real for you guys too, you know? They feed people down south, they're all, you know, they, they can get a little phony and all that stuff. So just a long story short, it was just a really good, uh, a really good meeting, some kindred spirit. Got to talk to his wife for a little while, Darby and all that stuff, it just, it was just really good, so. I say that with all this in mind, is that this is a special meeting for our church. I'm not calling it a revival meeting where you pencil in revival and hope the Lord shows up. I want us individually, because that's who makes up the church, the church is not a building. Okay? The church is made up of saved people. You are baptized in the body of Christ, First Corinthians twelve thirteen, the day you trusted Lord Jesus Christ. He put you in his body for all eternity. And we are made up of members in particular. And I would like us to be ready and, and be in preparation for that. If you have not been already, you've got, you know, eight days left of Christmas shopping to get ready for the special meeting. And I, it's special because I think it's gonna be good for us, I really do. I, I, it'll be a time of you and the Lord getting to know each other a little bit better, maybe repaying some breaches and stuff like that, which we'll look at in a minute. But I, I think it'll be a good time for us, and I'm aware special in the King James Bible occurs twice. It's Deuteronomy seven six and over in Acts nineteen eleven. So I know, so when you say special, I usually think of Brother Paul and all that stuff. He's special. But it does have a significant word, and I think this is a special meeting for us, man. So I wanna take a look at, in all the stuff I just said about Hezekiah and the, how great he was, and how the Lord said he was great and all that, and he had some really bad times, I wanna take a look at the, one of the most significant things, things he did in preparation for our meeting. Go with me over to Second Chronicles, twenty-nine. Second Chronicles, twenty-nine. Second Chronicles, twenty-nine. Nothing is rich as the Old Testament, boy. All these samples and examples, similitudes that are given to you and I in the Old Testament. Verse number one says this, "Hezekiah began to reign when he was five and twenty years old, and he reigned nine and twenty years in Jerusalem. His mother's name was Abijah, the daughter of Zechariah." I like that. If you didn't know who Abi or Abby was, he tells you who that is right there. The Bible will self-interpret for you if you let it. You don't need a Greek lexicon or the back of the Strongest Concordance or some goofy, uh, goofy nut telling you about Hebrew who doesn't know what Hebrew they're even speaking or what Greek they're doing. God's word will interpret itself for you. That's why you study the Bible line upon line, line upon line. Priest, Lord, on priest, set, priest, Lord, on priest. I'm not gonna get worn out saying that, that's how God teaches doctrine to people. He teaches it by repetition and by saying the same thing over and over again. Like, kinda like when you tell your kids to clean their room for the forty-seventh time. Or Estehia says, "Kenny, get those dust bunnies out of the corner." You knew that's, that, there's so much material in that, man. And the fact that one of your dog's name is Huggy? Just stop, it's Huggy, that's all I mean. You should have never said that, Kenny, because now it's just like, pff. It's like not photographic memory, but it's pretty close, man. Especially for crazy stuff like that, man. Huggy. And you were just trying to explain it, man, that's freaking me out. But the Bible will interpret itself, so Abi is Abijah. You say, "What's that have to do with anything?" Nothing, just stick to your Bible, man, you don't need anything else. God will give you a pastor and a teacher to help you get through this Bible, but ultimately, the Spirit of God is who teaches you that Bible and brings it to your rem- your remembrance, John fourteen twenty-six. That's the way God, God rolls through us. Verse number two says, "And he did that which was right in the sight of the Lord according to all that his father had done." I like this. You know what? He's following up and following after a great rule and reign. What a, what, what better example could you have than David the king? Outside of Jesus Christ, there is no greater picture of the millennial reign of the Lord Jesus, but without the adultery, murder, and numbering the people. I mean, David did those things, but God said, "Man, if I'm looking down and I'm gonna pick me a king, there's only one that's after mine own heart, and that's David." That doesn't mean that God has adultery and murder in his heart. It means that David followed after God's heart. Whereas you study King Saul, what does King Saul do when he gets pinched? "The people, the people, they made me do it." Well, I thought, I did, "When David gets caught, thou art the man, you're right. Let me put on saccharine ashes and wait till my baby dies." That's the heart of someone that wants to fall after God. So when you're pegged and you're wrong, and God says you're wrong, not the preacher, you own up to it, you own it, and you do something with it. You don't say, "Well, the church member made me do it, and it's too cold in here, and I don't like the chairs, and blah, 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 and he goes too long and all that stuff." That, the cold room and the chairs being uncomfortable, me going too long, that's never gonna change. That's an eternal decree from John Calvin down through me to you guys. Put that up for Tulip. These tulips gonna tell you what's the decree is, man. But I like that he followed his father. He didn't stray from the past so far that you couldn't recognize Hezekiah from David. I like that. But I'm gonna say this this morning as we get ready for our special meeting. I've been around some really good meetings. I really have, man. You, you think back in your history, some of the revival meetings you've been around, some of the missionary meetings, some of the times where God dealt with you at an altar or in your, or in your pew, or maybe you got home on the way home, uh, in the car, and you were, you were blubbering like a fool, man, and all that stuff, and God dealt with you about something in your life. There's been so many of those, man. I'll never forget the night I met, the first, not the night, but I mean, I remember, I'll never forget the night, nineteen eighty-seven, when I heard Dr. Arman close out that, that, um, that meeting. I'll never forget that. That's a stone, man. That's one of those Joshua twelve stones in the River Jordan for me personally. But there's many, been many others, and I'm glad that as the, we come into our special meeting, I'm glad that he didn't stray from that, but I, I want you to know that Hezekiah had to do things the way the Lord had him to do, and I wanna say to you this, is that the old meetings are the old meetings. This meeting is your meeting between you and your God. And that it is good sometimes to reminisce, but don't get stuck in the past. It's not good to hearken back to those past days and just sit there and wish, "Oh, I wish it was like this." Folks, no, it's not. You're in Laodicea as the church age winds down. It's not ramping up, man. There's no third or fourth great awakening. Most people are asleep now in church. If they even go to church. So I'm glad that Hezekiah, though he followed after his, uh, his father in lineage, David, he had his own gig and said, "You know what? I wanna do something. I, I want this to be, I want this to be special for me personally. Not for anybody else. If you're married, praise the Lord, but it's gotta be for you, husband, wife. If you're single, it's gotta be for you. Whatever the case may be. The time that the Lord wants to speak to you during this time, you know, in your own reading and all that, that's between you and the Lord, man." Go with me over to Ezra, I'll show you something neat. How some guys hearken back. Put a, put a marker here in Second Chronicles, we'll be coming back. Go to Ezra, chapter three. Look at verse number eight with me when you get there. Ezra three eight. "Now the second year of their coming unto the house of God at Jerusalem, in the second month, began Zerubbabel, the son of Shielteel, and Jeshua, the son of Josidek, and the remnant of their brethren, the priests and the Levites, and all they that were come out of the captivity unto Jerusalem, and employ the Levites from twenty years old and upward, to set forth the work of the house of the Lord. Then stood Jeshua with his sons and his brethren, Cadmeel and his sons, the sons of Judah, together, to set forth the workmen in the house of God, the sons of Hanadad, with their sons and their brethren, the Levites. And when the builders laid the foundation of the temple of the Lord, they set the priests in their apparel with trumpets, and the Levites, the sons of Asaph, with symbols, to praise the Lord after the ordinance of David, king of Israel. And they sang together by chorus in singing, giving thanks to the Lord, because he is good for his mercy and dearth forever toward Israel. And all the people shouted with a great shout when they praised the Lord, because the foundation of the house of the Lord was laid." Folks, they're coming out of seventy years of captivity in the book of Ezra. They're redoing the, the, they're, they're gonna redo the temple, starting with the foundation. Nehemiah's the rebuilding of the wall for the protection. They've just come out of seventy years of being in a heathen, godless land. I mean, the God of Israel land called Babylon. Now look what the Bible goes on to say. So they've laid, they've laid the foundation in verse number eleven. Look at verse number twelve. "But many of the priests and Levites, and chief of the fathers, who were ancient men, that had seen the first house, when the foundation of this house was laid before their eyes, wept with a loud voice, and many shouted aloud for joy. So the people could not discern the voice of the shout of joy from the voice of the weeping of the people; for the people shouted with a loud shout, and the noise was heard far." What a cool thing. There, there were still old folks around that remembered the way it was. But then when they saw this go down, they said, "I can't believe God is doing this today." Well, they know the revivals, I understand that. I understand the sweeping revivals of thousands being saved in the foolishness down in Kentucky wasn't revival. Just had to throw that in, in case you're wondering. Whatever that stupid thing. And the Clownsville revival in the early nineties down in Petzko, that wasn't a real revival either. I'm talking where people are really getting saved, man. And save people getting right and throwing their stuff away. I'm talking real biblical revival. That's gone. But that doesn't mean we can't have personal revival with our great God and our great Savior. And that, you, don't just, I'm just telling you, I'm trying to do this, but this is, this is practicality in your own life as well. Don't just show up and say, "Let me flip the switch." You're not Deion Sanders showing up, running a forty in your sweatpants and can burn out a four-two. I'm just saying spiritually speaking, you're not Deion Sanders. You can't just flip the switch, because you're an elite, world-class athlete of maybe top ten in the world that could do that. I'm using that as a spiritual application to you and I, save people. You don't just flip the switch and say, "Oh, I'll get right when he gets here." No, you've been, you should have been starting to get right since day one, man. Self-examination, look at yourself. And then just not show up and say, "Well, you know what? Uh, you know, maybe it'll happen this week." No, man, you gotta come prepared for this thing. And I'm glad Hezekiah had that on himself. He's not just relying on the past, he's like looking and going, "Wow, this could be something really good for me, man." And I need it. I don't care if you're on the mountaintop with Lord Jesus Christ right now, you need to be preached to every opportunity you can get. Because there's always something in your life lacking. It's not chasing the carrot or chasing, chasing the bunny around the track like you're a greyhound. It's, man, there's still stuff in my life that needs to go. Every day. It has to go. Uh, I would say it's the little foxes that spoil the vine, because the King James Bible says it's the little foxes that spoil the vine. Well, Hezekiah says, "Yeah, I, I like, I like my daddy, and, you know, that's the great things he did, but I want this, what I'm about to do to be special for me." I'll show you one more about, about that. Go over with me to, um, go with me to the First Kings, chapter number fourteen. First Kings fourteen. You know how these go, man, you write down these verses, and then you get up here, like the Lord says, "No, you're not saying that." Oh, come on, really? Really? First Kings fourteen, show you something neat. I think it's neat. Picked it up from a preacher years ago. It's, it's, it's stuck with me. And I understand Rehoboam, uh, is a mess, I understand that. But check out what happens, verse twenty-five. First Kings fourteen twenty-five. "And it came to pass in the fifth year of King Rehoboam, that Shishak, uh, uh, king of Egypt, came up against Israel, uh, came up against Jerusalem, excuse me. And he took away the treasures of the house of the Lord, and the treasures of the king's house, he even took away all. And he took away all the shields of gold which Solomon had made. And King Rehoboam made in their stead brazen shields, and committed them unto the hands of the chief of the guard, which kept the door of the king's house. And it was so when the king went into the house of the Lord, that the guard bare them and brought them back into the guard chamber." Say, "What's that got to do with anything?" Shishak comes and takes away all the gold shields. So what's Rehoboam gonna do? "We don't have any shields. We don't have any, what are we gonna do?" No, you know what he does? He looks around and finds a lesser metal at a lesser time and still makes shields for people. Say, "What's that got to do with anything?" We're not in the age of Philadelphia, folks. We're in Laodicea. We're in Vernon, Connecticut. We're here where you hand out gospel tracts and people could give a rip less. Consciences are seared, young people are off the rail. You don't know if you're a male, a female, or an iguana. You're wrecked. You're putting cat litter in church, in, in schools for kids that identify as a cat. I hate cats, therefore by de facto, I hate you for acting like a cat. And we're gonna have a transfiguring service right now. I'm gonna act like Benny Hinn, and I'm gonna get that devil out of you. But it won't be a laying on of the hands like you see him do. It'll be a different laying on of the hands. You don't, folks, you're in a time now where it's, society lost, is wrecked. Government is wrecked. Saved people are wrecked. But what are you gonna do? Just quit? "I don't have any gold. My dad had gold." Well, get up and make some with brass. Hezekiah's not sitting around going, "Wow, what David did was awesome, and my, wow, and the Legion's, he killed every... I can't kill everyone, there's no one named he's left to kill." But you know what I can do? I can do for the time I have with what I have for my God. And so what if it's brass? So what if it's Laodicea? You can still have your own personal walk with Jesus Christ. Uh, doesn't he say over in Revelation three, verse eighteen? "In Laodicea, I counsel thee to buy of me." So you can have gold in Laodicea, can't you? But you gotta let him in when he's knocking on your door. He'll give you some gold. I'm just saying, what are, what are you doing to get ready for this meeting? "Ah, I'm just gonna show up, it's just church." Okay, well, if that's, that's what you wanna do, then you do you, man. And just still stay in your miserable, bitter, saved life you got going on. And then maybe the trumpet will sound, you'll go home to glory, and you'll stand in front of the Lord with that same push you got on your face right now. And you can explain to him why you didn't get your heart right when he wanted to deal with you and talk to you. And you see how that goes, man. You don't have to answer to me, I'm nobody, I'm a zero for Jesus Christ. But you're gonna answer to the real Jesus Christ one day. It'd be better for you to get that thing started down here at some point in your life instead of just chilling out and cooling out, waiting for the rapture to happen. Hezekiah says, "You know what? Dad, my, my dad in the lineage was great. David was phenomenal. Never be another David, but I can do something for the Lord with what I got today." Look, go back to Second Chronicles with me. We, we gotta get scooting here. I've only got another fifteen hundred verses to get through, no. Second Chronicles, look at verse number three with me. The Bible says, "He in the first year of his reign, in, uh, he in the first year of his reign, in the first month, opened the doors of the house of the Lord and repaired them." Go to verse number seven with me while you're right here. "Bible says also, they have shut up the doors of the porch and put out the lamps, and have not burned incense nor offered burnt offerings in the house, uh, in the holy place of the God of Israel. Wherefore the wrath of the Lord was upon Judah and Jerusalem, and he had to deliver them to trouble, to astonishment, to hissing, as ye see with your eyes. For lo, our fathers have fallen by the sword, and our sons and our daughters and our wives are in captivity for this. Now it is in mine heart to make a covenant with the Lord God of Israel, that his fierce wrath may turn away from us." I wanna say this as we get, keep on going here. "He saw the house needed opening and repairing. What know ye not that your body is the..." You know where God resides today? He resides in the believer's body. Do you need to open up some things to the Lord today? Are there some things that you think have, that have been cloistered away or secretly tucked away? That he doesn't know about, like he's just turning a blind eye to? Is there something, some cobweb hidden there that nobody knows but you and the Lord, but you don't think he really knows about it? Is he, is he trying to get you to open up your house so he can actually do a little bit of spring cleaning? Uh, Brother Kenny was talking about spring cleaning, man. I mean, if you did all year round, you wouldn't have to have a schedule for spring cleaning. That's just my advice to you. It's my godly counsel to you as your preacher. But if you're gonna wait, and your dust bunnies are like this big, then that's a problem, man. But see, we have, we have spring cleaning, do we not? Don't we clean up when guests come over? But we don't take any inventory or stock of our house when the Lord comes by. And I know he already lives there forever. So how about you open that thing up and see what's going on, and then how about you make some repair to it? Hebrews, chapter four, says in verse twelve, "For the word of God is quick and powerful and sharper than any two-edged sword. Piercing into the dividing sun are soul and spirit, and the joints and mirrors are discerners of the thoughts and intentions of the heart." But the next verse is the best part of all. And everything is what? Open and naked unto him with whom we have to do. It's not talking about God, it's talking about the word of God. You've gotta actually let the word of God get in there. You say, "Well, preacher, you've been saying that for the last five or six weeks." Yeah, because I need to do more of it, and so don't you. It's wonderful to know about rightly dividing the word of truth and the kingdom of heaven, the kingdom of God, and the tulip, we have a great time with that. But what about when God searches all that stuff that's going on inside your heart about unforgiveness and bitterness and and hatred and anger and stuff like that, that, and frustration? I know, I go through it every day, man, it's not funny. And God just, he says, why don't you open up and let me do a little bit of searching in there? Because I wanna actually search so I can repair you to be more like Jesus Christ. Nobody likes going to the doctor, but if there's one doctor you can trust and go to, it's Dr. Jesus. He's the one that does fine surgery every time and all the stitches are right and there is no infection, there's no leftover residual. He wants to open that thing up, repair it and get back out to make you more like, and make me more like Jesus Christ and himself. And less like you and I. Go with me to Psalm one hundred thirty-nine, please, famous passage, Psalm one hundred thirty. This is not new to any one of you, I know it's not, it's not new to me either. That's what is horrible about this, this repetition, it just kills you. Because it makes you realize, wow, I'm just really not that great of a child of God, man. And I need improvement, I need repairing. But if you don't let him in, if you don't let the guy come in and say, that's wrong and that's wrong, if you don't open up, how can you ever find out what's wrong? That's hard, I'm not a very open person. My dad was an open person, man. Hugging and, and I know it's, you're gonna find it's hard to believe and, you know, I love you and stuff like that. It came out near the end of his life, but it wasn't really around there. It's like, no, go run a mile if you want something to do. I appreciate that now, looking back. But there wasn't a lot of, uh, I love yous or hugs per se, that's just the way they grew up in that, in that era. And that's okay. But then near the end of his life, he started to open up a little bit and he sees the kids and he sees the other grandkids and he sees, you know, his kids that have grown up into be thirty-five, forty, forty-five-year-old men and, and he's like, well, it, it softens you, it opens up. Well, why does it take so long for that to happen? Why does it take so long for you to let, realize the temple of the Lord needs to be opened up? And there needs to be some repairs done in there. Why does it take so long for us to do that? Because we're prideful, man. We're stiff-necked. Nothing, I'm all set. We make fun of lost people for saying that, we do the same thing. How you doing? I'm doing great. And you're like, I'm leaving church after this and never coming back. You say that doesn't happen, you haven't been around this long enough. And it all starts with one straw on the camel's back and then finally gets to the last straw on the camel's back and then they're gone. Saved but gone. And you wonder what happened, well, no, no open heart, can't talk about things. I, listen, for guys, uh, it's hard to do. Because you, you have to like weaken yourself, or so it seems. And the Lord says, no, you need to open up the doors of the temple of your, of your house and let me get in there so I can repair what's going on. If you never let him in, you'll never get repaired. Look what the Bible says when you verse number one. Psalm one hundred thirty-nine says, to the chief musician of Psalm of David, O Lord, thou hast searched me and known me. If you, if you think your wife knows you, she doesn't know you like he knows you. Verse twenty-three of the same Psalm says, search me, O God, and know my heart. We quote this, but do we really want him to open it up? Try me and know my thoughts and see if there be any wicked way in me and lead me in the way everlasting. Opening up the doors of the house. What, what's gonna take place while brother Noel's is here? What's gonna take place leading up to, what's gonna take place in your everyday walk with the Lord? Does, does he have carte blanche to step in anytime and say, that's gotta go, that's wrong? Change is needed. I can fix it. I think we put up that barrier way too quick because we don't, you know, we trust the Lord for eternity, but we don't trust him for the temporary. Lord, you saved me from hell and held me in my sin, thank you for it, but I don't trust you with anything else. And I don't wanna open up to you because it might reveal what's really going on. The Lord's like, yeah, I already know, I, I already know what's going on. I just want you to tell me you know what's going on and you realize what needs to be fixed. And I can do it for you. But because we're in America and we're cocky and arrogant and fools, I got, I got this myself. I'll pull up my own bootstraps. Okay, Galatian, you keep trying that. Look where it's got you. Look where it's got you, man. And Hezekiah says, you know what? I want something like my dad, but I want for me to work, the Lord to work through me. But I, it's gotta, I, I gotta open up these doors and I gotta fix what's going on. I, it needs repair, man, something's wrong between this house of God and the God of the house. There's something wrong. Go with me to Psalm fifty-one. Psalm fifty-one. Get you all messed up in the Old Testament this week, we'll have to have a cleansing tonight. Something put you back under the law and freak you all out, man. Get you looking forward to the cross and get you all scared, get you all weeping. Psalm fifty-one, gotta lighten it up, it's kinda heavy in here right now and that's okay. Psalm fifty-one, verse five says, behold, I was shaping an iniquity. I'm all good. No, you're not. Behold, I was shaping an iniquity and sin did my mother conceive me. Behold, the desirest truth in the inward parts, and the hidden part thou shalt make me to know wisdom. Purge me with hyssop, and I shall be clean. Wash me and I shall be whiter than snow. Make me to hear joy and gladness at the bones which thou hast broken, may rejoice. Hide thy face from my sins and blot out all mine iniquities. Create me a clean heart, O God, and renew a right spirit within me. Cast me not away from thy presence, take not thy Holy Spirit from me. I understand, you, you already know, I'm not gonna say a word. Verse twelve, restore to me the joy of thy salvation and uphold me with thy free spirit. Go to Psalm one hundred and eight while you're right here, Psalm one hundred and eight. Psalm one zero eight, please. I understand David was involved in that wicked sin with Bathsheba and Uriah, I understand that's the context of Psalm fifty-one. But he says, you know what? Some things gotta go. Some things gotta get fixed. Some things gotta get right so I can have a free spirit, so I can sing the songs that we sing with some joy. I can, I can look at my hymn book and be happy about what can wash away my sins. I can sing some songs with some joy because I'm clear between me and the Lord. The hearts opened up, the doors are opened up and they, they've been repaired. Lord, I know I've done a horrible thing with Bathsheba and Uriah. It's absolutely horrible and I, excuse me, uh, cleanse the, the accountability of that sin. It's gonna cost me four kids. But I want it to be right between me and you and as I go down the road with, with Bathshea, I want this thing to be right. Could you, could you give back the free spirit? Could you restore to me the joy of thy salvation? Could you make me happy again in you, Lord? Instead of me having to go through like faking it? Could you do that? Well, open up the doors. Recognize you need some repair, man. Now, I understand fix can means you're fixed on a compass point, fixed on a direction, I understand, but read it with me in Psalm one hundred and eight, verse number one, a song or Psalm of David. O God, my heart is fixed. I understand that he's fixed on something, but just, I'm taking some biblical liberties because I'm preaching and you're not. O God, my heart is fixed. I will sing and give praise even with my glory. Go over to Psalm one hundred and twelve while you're right here. Psalm one hundred and twelve. While you're right here, verse five says this, Psalm one hundred and twelve, verse five, a good man showeth favor and leneth, he will guide his affairs, uh, guide his affairs with discretion. Surely he shall not be moved forever, the righteous shall be and everlasting remembers. He shall not be afraid of evil tidings, his heart is fixed trusting in the Lord. I understand that's fixed, he's not moving. But how about your heart needs fixing? Between you and your God? That there's something going on that needs repaired this morning? I'm telling you, don't wait till Monday night at six twenty-nine and thirty-three seconds to say, I'm here, Lord, and he's gonna go, yeah, and I've been waiting for this since, I don't know, a long time ago. You say, what's the practical, I'm not just gearing up for the meeting, I'm saying this is everyday life with you and your Savior. This is a practical thing every day in your life. Lord, could you search me today? You say, where'd you get that on the pile of the pistols? First Corinthians eleven, examine yourselves. Over in second Corinthians thirteen, we saw it last week. You're supposed to take a biblical checkup every day of yourself through the Holy Ghost and that King James Bible and let him come right in there and he, Lord, anywhere you wanna go, you can go. Isn't that freaky? Because you know where he's gonna attack? Stuff that you didn't even realize was there. But you're glad when he brings it out. If you have any spiritual, what's the term I'd like to use that's not in the bullpen playing baseball right now? If you have any spiritual gumption to you, you want him to say that right there and that right there, gotta go. I'm a great Christian to the Lord. Oh, you are when you're around everybody else. But does your heart, does your heart need fixing? The Lord can do it, man. I want this not to just be a special meeting for, I want, I want the Lord, he speaks to me every day through this Bible, man. But I want, I, I want the Lord to do something, man. I don't wanna look back at Dr. Rockman in nineteen eighty-seven and the revival meetings at First Bible and the missionaries here and there and the things we've had. And we've had meetings that when brother Burt was pastor in church, we had John, some great stuff. I, I, those were great, man. But how about today? Well, we don't have any gold left, preacher, because you know it's Laodicea. Well, can you make some with some brass? And then could you go ask him to give you some gold during Laodicea? He will. But here's the thing, folks, you don't want it. Just get real pointed. You say you want it, but you don't. Search me, O God, and try, you say that, but you don't want it. And seriously, I don't either. Because I still wanna cling to me. And the more you and I cling to me, the less we're gonna be like him. What a fellowship, what a joy. Do I go back to second Chronicles, please? We're scooting, it's like a record for me, we actually like threw a few verses here. It's a record. We, we'll, we'll get it going here. If not, the Lord will shut it down, that's okay too. Look at verse number four with me. Verse number four, second Chronicles twenty-nine, four. He, and he brought in the priests and the Levites and gathered them together into the east street and said unto them, hear me, ye Levites, sanctify now yourselves and sanctify the house of the Lord God of your fathers, and carry forth the filthiness out of the holy place. Look it with me in verse number twelve. Then the Levites arose, may hath the son of Amasai and Joel, the son of Azeriah, the sons of the Coethites, of the sons of Mirari, Kish, the son of Abdai, and Azariah, the son of Jahalaleel, and of the Gershenites, Joach, the son of Zima, and Eden, the son of Joach, and of the sons of Elisephan, Shimeri, and Jael, and of the sons of Asaph, Zechariah, and Madaniah, and of the sons of Heeman, Jahiel, and Shimiay, and the sons of Jethothun, Shamai, and Uziel. And Kenny said, amen, I ain't reading that, man. Verse fifteen, and they gathered their brethren and sanctified themselves and came according to the command of the king by the words of the Lord to cleanse the house of the Lord. And the priests went into the, uh, inner part of the house of the Lord to cleanse it and brought out all the uncleanness they found in the temple of the Lord into the core of the house of the Lord. And the Levites took it and carried it out abroad into, into the book, uh, uh, Kydron. I, I love that book, you gotta, you gotta slide that, that's pretty cool. Look with me, verse seventeen. And they began on the first day of the first month of sanctifying, and the eighth day of the month, came into the porch of the Lord. So that sanctifies the house of the Lord in eight days. And the sixteenth day of the first month, they may and end. I like that, it took eight days for this thing to happen, the process. Didn't just flip the switch, did they? Verse eight, but it had to start though. Verse eighteen says, then they went to Hezekiah. The king said, we have cleansed all the house of the Lord and all, and the altar burnt offering with all the vessels thereof and the showbread, uh, and the showbread table with all the vessels thereof. Moreover, all the vessels which King Ahaz in his reign did cast away in his transgression, have we prepared and sanctified? And behold, they are before the altar of the Lord. He saw the house didn't need just opening up and repairing, he saw the house needed to be cleansed. Not a lot of words need to be said about that. Smoking, drinking, craziness like that, that pretty much peels away pretty quick, does it not? The outward stuff is kind of easy to get rid of. It kinda goes away as you get in your Bible, hang around other saved people, uh, praying, all that stuff, it, it kinda, that stuff peels away, that exterior pharisaical, those, but you don't wanna become pharisaical and just have it. It's the inside stuff that kills me, man. The one thing about Jesus Christ that absolutely marvels me is the actions, yes, hundred percent sinless, pure, right motive all the time. Brother Burt and I were talking on Friday night, we had, under great conviction, I think Burt may have gotten saved again, I don't know. And, and he did everything right, proper. And, and out of his mouth came nothing but oil and honey and rebuke and correction, all that. You know what the thing that troubles me about Jesus Christ? That just, this wigs me right out? His thought life was right all the time. You know where I struggle with? Wanting to kill people. Is that too real on a Sunday morning that the preacher, the pastor has problems with anger? That, that things still tick me off that shouldn't tick me off? You know why? Because the house hasn't been cleansed yet, stupid. That's why. Because you won't release the thing you wanna keep tucked away, you won't, you won't clean the whole house out. You'll clean ninety-five percent of it, but you won't clean out the five percent that's the thing that's really holding back the whole show. It's weird, man. You still deal with that anger and you, you just get freaked out about stupid stuff, man. I'm not gonna tell you that Taco Bell story again because every time I do, there's ninety-seven thousand cars and all the idiots lining up to plug in their electric car out front, I just, yeah. Do you feel like evangelizing? No, I feel like second coming, to be honest with you. I want the gospel of the kingdom at that time, man. I'm just saying that you're, you're dealing with stuff, that, that extra, oh, I'm doing good. What's the Lord say about the filth in your life or the uncleanness in your life? See, instantaneously, it's gonna be pornography and filthy moves, that's what we're gonna think, but okay, uh, you thought evil about anybody lately? Have had a rumor go through your head lately? Let me ask you, did you have an evil surmise that came up in the last week or so? See, that's the stuff I don't even like to talk about. I don't like it preached at me because the head goes, a doink. See, that's, that's the stuff, man, that, that, but that, that's all part of this. You say, well, it's, no, this is everyday Christianity, it's just, yeah, but we're trying to get ready to have a, a very good preacher and a, a very good guy come to town to deal with us through the word of God. And I want the Lord not to, if we have food and say, that's what, I want God to deal with me. But he does deal with you every day, you crack that book open if you're really looking for it. But I think sometimes the hesitation comes on the Lord's part is because we're just, uh, he's pointing his finger at that thing that we will not, it's filthiness, it's unclean, and he says, get rid of it. I can see it, nobody else can see it. Get rid of it. I'll just show you something neat, go over to Acts nineteen and we're, we're, I told you, we're, we're moving, we're moving quick, man. How do you prepare for a special meeting? Well, pretty good outline in old second Chronicles here. Look what the Bible says to me. Verse thirteen, nineteen thirteen. Then certain the vagabond Jews exorcist took upon them to call over them which had evil spirits in the name of the Lord Jesus, saying, we adjure you by Jesus whom Paul preaches. Verse fourteen, and there were seven sons of one Skiva Jew and chief of the priests, which did so. And the evil spirit answered and said, Jesus, I know, and Paul, I know, but who are ye? And the man in whom the evil spirit was leaped on them and overcame them and prevailed against them, so they fled out of that house naked and wounded. And this was known to all the Jews and Greeks also dwelling in Ephesus, and fear fell on them all. In the name of the Lord Jesus was magnified. Now watch this. And many that believed came and confessed and showed their deeds. Many of them also which used curious arts brought their books together and burned them before all men. And they counted the price of them and found it fifty thousand pieces of silver. So mightily grew the word of God and prevailed. They didn't keep the music CD in the corner that they could go back with the old times because I'm feeling down. Oh, if you have an old CD that's a country music one where I left my dog and shot my cat and my husband or whatever, I don't, I mean, how is that cheerful for you? Or pick any other, what, pick any genre of music, but you know, I just wanna keep it around. So you know, that's, that's my own personal time with the Lord, man. It don't, this could be music, could be any, it could be anything, any other number of sins going on. But Hezekiah said, you guys go sanctify yourselves, then clean the house out. We're the temple of the Lord today. I, what, what do those guys do? They brought forth all their arts and all their pictures and all this stuff. You know what they did? They brought it down in front of everybody. It wasn't just personal, which I know it is personal. I know altars can be a place where, I, I understand all of this stuff with the altar calls, you know, I know that. But I'm not against them or opposed them, you could do it right in your seat, I don't really care. But the fact of the matter was, they weren't scared to say, I'm done with this old life and this foolishness. Here it is. You know what's gonna make me be, me more a little cemented in my life? I'm gonna do it in front of everybody. You said your vows when you got married in front of everybody. But because we all got Instagram and all they went to the altar. Did you see what they brought forward? And we're, we're scared now to do those things. I have an unspoken request, well, why can't we just say what it is? Now, I'm saying, I'm talking about personal stuff, man. I'm just saying, we're, we're afraid of gossip and rumor and innuendo and all. Why did they ask that? Do they have a problem with that? That's why they're asking for prayer, dum-dum. Because they're having a problem with it. It's your duty to pray and not to run it down the road to your neighbor. You know, the prayer chain, the rumor mill, I mean, the, I'm sorry, the prayer chain? You know, could you pray for them? Oh, what's wrong? Well, you know, yeah, and there you go. Well, they weren't afraid to take this out in public and say, you know, I don't care what other people think. This is between me and my Savior. I don't care what anybody else thinks. I need to get this thing cleansed with my God. And I don't care what it costs me, if I'm very ashamed or embarrassed. Fifty thousand, what do you think fifty thousand pieces of silver was back then? I have no idea what it would mean now. I couldn't even figure that out. Don't come up to me afterwards and say you did it on your stupid phone with your calculator, they'll smash your phone in the Brook, in the Brook Kydron, right out there. That's our Brook Kydron, right out there, man. Take all the idols, throw them out there, man, smash them, we have a phone smashing ceremony. We love you, Lord, thrown in there and they're like, is Verizon still open? There's a T-Mobile around here, right? I'm just saying, man, they weren't afraid to do it out in the open. Let's cleanse this thing and get it right. I'm telling you, man, it's, there's a lot more to Bible Christianity than just, I know all the books of the Bible and I can tell you Jew, Gentile, Church of God. That's wonderful, man, we love that, you know, we're insane about that around here. But this is what, this is the rubber meat in the road, man. And yes, it's preparation for the special, but it's also how I wanna live my Christian life every day. And not just, you know, up and down, here and there and, ah, you know, can, okay, I'm gonna go through valleys and mountains. Could it just be consistent going through there, though? Hezekiah said, we need, we need some, need some cleaning. Go back to Second Chronicles, please. I did tell you to keep a thumb there. Or some other four finger, whatever, whatever we got going on. Look at verse number ten with me again. Now it is in mine heart to make a covenant with the Lord God of Israel that his fierce wrath may turn away from us, my sons. My sons, be not now negligent, for the Lord hath given, hath chosen you to stand before him to serve him, that you should minister unto him and to burn incense. I wanna say this. And we can't go to the verses for sake of time, but you know, you know what Hezekiah did to those around him? He encouraged them because he would get in on it with them. This is not, you wicked filthy sheep. You need to get right with God. No, the preacher does too. You do understand that, right? It's that Nicolaid and mm, I, I wanna use the NIV word, dung, I'll use the King James word. The, it's that Nicolaid and dung that drives me insane. Where you're the man of God. No, you're the guy that God gifted to be the preacher in the pulpit, but you're, that's the authority God's given to you and the gift he's given to you. But you deal with stuff just like everybody else. You don't talk down to them in that regard. You open up the book and say, you know what? I got struggles and issues too, just like you do. It's different package, man. And Hezekiah says, you know what? I'm doing this for my God and now my sons. Don't be negligent. Would you, cause you know what? God, it's, he's encouraging those around saying, you know what? God wants to do something with you. We as preachers sometimes for years and years and years have cut so down on people. You're no good, you're lower than, you know, whatever the lowest thing is in the lowest place of the world. Whatever that is, they Marianas trench or whatever this, they found some other place out, some other place that's deeper. I'm so low, I can't do anything for God. You're right, but you're a child of God. Start acting like it. I'm just a sinner saved by grace. No, you're not. You're a child of God. You're a saint. Pull yourself up the Bible way and say, you know what? Yeah, I do commit sin, but I'm not a sinner. I'm, I'm, I'm the child of the King. I should start acting like, in fact, he gave me a complete and filling of the Holy Ghost, sealed me in the day of redemption. He gave me a complete and full Bible and he, he's given me everything I need. You know what he says? He goes, guys, God has chosen you and guess what? He wants to do something with you. He wants to minister to you and through you. You know what this meeting will do in preparation for this meeting and letting the Lord speak to you through the word of God through this meeting? It'll make you a better child of God for his service and honor and glory. Brother Burt praised it very often. He says, you know what? It's unbelievable that God would allow me to be used in the service of the King. No, the King, the one that owns it all. That I get to do anything for him? Are you serious? I get to open my mouth for him? If you're saved and you don't realize how great your God is, you need to check your ticker out, man. Hezekiah says, it starts with me. But my sons, don't you be negligent. Come on, man, what other God are you gonna serve that's like our God? Whom have I in heaven but thee? And there's none upon earth that I desire beside thee, who among the sons of the men can be likened unto the Lord? Look around, man. Is there anybody like our God? But yet we give time and reverence and honor to them. Hezekiah says, not now. We're not doing this. We're not, we're not doing this, man. Going me back to a second, oh, I didn't have you go, so there you go. I'm, I'm right there. Look at that. Brother Kenny worked out again, didn't it? Verse number twenty, and we'll, we'll put a, we'll put a bow on this. Verse number twenty of Second Chronicles twenty-nine. Then Hezekiah the king rose early and gathered the rulers of the city, went out to the house of the Lord, and they brought seven bullocks and seven rams and seven lambs and seven he- Lucky sevens, let's go play the Lotto. Seven lambs, seven he goats, and for a sin offering for the kingdom, uh, for the kingdom, for the sanctuary for Judah, and commanded the priests, the sons of Aaron, to offer them on the altar of the Lord. So they killed the bullocks, and the priests received the blood and sprinkled it on the altar. Likewise, when they had killed the rams, they sprinkled the blood upon the altar. They killed also the lambs, and they sprinkled the blood upon the altar. And they brought forth the he goats for the sin offering before the king and the congregation, and they laid their hands upon them. The priests killed them and made their reconciliation with their blood upon the altar to make an atonement for all Israel. For the king commanded that the burnt offering and the sin offering should be made for all Israel. And he set the Levites in the house of the Lord with cymbals, with altars, harps, according to the commandment of God and of Gad, the king's seer, and Nathan, the prophet, for so was the commandment of the Lord by his prophets. And the Levites stood with their instruments of David and the priests with the trumpets. And Hezekiah commanded to offer the burnt offering upon the altar, and when the burnt offering began, the song of the Lord began also with the trumpets and with the instruments ordained by David, king of Israel, and all the congregation worshipped. And the singers sang, and the trumpeters sang, and all this continued until the burnt offering was finished. And when they had made an end of offering, the king and all that were present with him bowed themselves and worshipped. They say, what's the big deal about that as we put this, put this to an end here? True worship is sacrifice of what you value most. The first time worship occurs in the King James Bible is Genesis twenty-two. You guys stay here while I and the lad go yonder to worship. What is Abraham gonna do? He's gonna put the thing he loves the most on the altar to God. True worship is not shine, Jesus, shine. I'm an idiot who ever wrote that song. That's funny, isn't it, buddy? I got so much more, you have no idea, man. And all just comes, I don't know from what spirit it comes, but it does come, man. Hillsong. We had a good worship service. Did you kill the thing you loved the most in your life? Then you didn't worship. You're a liar. Playing your bungos with your chicks up there looking like a stinking bunch of harlots? That's not worship. You little fog machine and your little, you know, your Bob Seeger. On the road again. That's what it looks like. It's not God, Jesus Christ of the Bible. Worship is you killing that thing that is the most valued to you in your life. I don't know what that is for you. I guarantee one of them is pride. Self-esteem, love of self. God says, get that up on Mount Moriah and let's put a knife in it. And you know what the Lord says? The angel comes out and says, stop. I just wanna know if you feared me. Oh, he's gonna cause me to give up everything I love. Maybe I'd be good for you, but maybe he just wants to see if you're willing to give it all up. That's where worship really happens. You start taking that thing you love the most and you, then the singing broke out. Then the instruments happened. Then they bowed down. It was, let's get this thing going the right way. The Lord, he is God and he says, there's something wrong in my life. There's something I love more than him, kill it. And then now we can have a good song service. You say that's crazy. Oh, no. Hebrews eleven. Hebrews eleven. How's it start out? We know the words, I'll get you, we're gonna have a talk later, man. How's it, sorry, Hebrews eleven. You know, faith is, faith is the substance of things hoped for, the evidence of things not seen, and it goes on down. It's that by faith the world is framed by the word of God and all those things. But what's the next thing after that? By faith Abel offered. And then Enoch walked. And then Noah worked. For years in our crowd, we have gotten that out of order. It's work first. Walk will follow and then we'll just worship. No, Abel killed it first. Then Enoch had a walk and then Noah said, let's build an ark. And I'm guilty of this too because work covers up everything. I'm working, I'm working, I'm working. God says, yeah, but you've got some stuff in your life you're not getting rid of. You haven't cleansed that temple. You haven't opened up to me. You haven't done anything that I've required of you. It's just you're working to put on a show for everybody else around you that you're working for me, but I really would rather have you. Cause once I have you, then the rest of the stuff falls in line. And once you kill what you value more than me, then you'll start walking with me and then you'll do the work I want you to do. There's a proper order to that thing. And it starts with killing the thing you love the most and the thing I love the most. That's true Bible worship. Hezekiah's getting this place ready, man. He's getting the house, he's like, man, if, if we're gonna do this, let's go at it with everything we got, man. He say, well, what's the end of it? At the end, you can, you can read the rest of the chapter, but you know what he brings out? He says, guys, did you see, we're gonna go the last verse of Second Chronicles. I shouldn't have said anything. I was good up until then, man. But do you see the benefit? And Hezekiah saw the benefits of all this. What all this would bring forth, the benefits, man. Look what the Bible says to me. Verse thirty-six, and Hezekiah rejoiced and all the people that God had prepared the people for the thing was done suddenly. We got eight days, man. How long did it take for them to cleanse the stuff out? Not a coincidence, I don't think. I'm not, but folks, this is not just because we're having a guest preacher in, it's because I need to be better for Jesus Christ and so don't you. And Hezekiah gives an unbelievable pattern. He gives an unbelievable, just a whole procedure book, a whole routine for you and I to follow from an Old Testament in sample of, you know what? Let's get this house ready. I'm twenty-five years old. I don't really know what I'm doing, but I can't stand seeing that thing look like that anymore. Let's go in and open it up. Let's repair it. Let's clean it out. Let's, let, let, let's, if we're gonna do this, let's do it right. Thank you, Father, for the morning opportunity to preach your word. I pray that, Father, you would deal with hearts as only you can. I, I have no power nor ability. I have nothing. Father, I mean that and you know that. I have nothing to offer these people at all. But I know you do and Father, I'd like to be a vessel used for your honor and glory, as I'm sure these folks do as well, but there's a, there's a process. Father, I thank you for this Old Testament example. It's, uh, it's been really hard for me to read that and not, not take inventory of my own life. Father, please help us to do better through the power of the Spirit of God and beings to your word to be prepared vessels for not just the meeting coming up, but for our great King and our great God and in that day called the judgment seat of Christ. I thank you, Father, for the folks. I thank you for their ears. Thank you for their intent to be here. Pray to bless them and Father, that you continue to work on them. Christ name I pray. Amen.